All right, I'm gonna call ahead. Jessica?
Here.
Rod?
Yes.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Also, your meeting has been properly noticed.
Yes.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a volunteer admission statement?
I will. Mount Hore Bay Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thanks, Jim. Moving on to 2A for the approval of the agenda, we're going to move 7A, the DECA item up before our discussion items so that they can get on with their evening. Now entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the January 16, 2023 Board Meeting Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 2C. Approval of the January 30, 2023 Board Meeting Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 3, addressing the board. We are going to start tonight with our student spotlight. Dr. Slair, would you like to let us know?
Oh boy, we do have...
Wonderful visitors, actually.
We do. We get to celebrate two students today, not just one, but two. And I'm so grateful that we have our friends from Hearts and Hands here tonight, as well as our friends from Agape. Both of our teachers here are going to share a little bit about our students, Kelly, as well as Finley, respectively. So who would like to go first?
Sean.
All right, I'm Teresa, and this is JoJo. And we nominated Kelly for being a super friend in our classroom, and it goes beyond that. She is a model friend every day. And Kelly is caring, compassionate, and empathetic, and helpful to others.
She makes it a point to make new friends and to help them feel welcome in our new situations. She began the year working on her own transitions to our classroom and now models kindness and support for others. We are happy to have Kelly in our classroom.
Well, Kelly, who are these wonderful people who are with us tonight? Who's Mom and Dad? Is this Mom?
Yeah.
And Dad? And did you bring your brothers and sisters with you?
I have one brother who's playing something here, and I have one sister.
Wow, they have to be so proud of you like we are here today. Yes, congratulations. We have this certificate here for you. And then you promised you'd put this in a special place up at your house, okay? Oh, that's wonderful. Will you be willing to take a picture with us in a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, wonderful. And then, of course, we also get to celebrate our young man from Finley, from Agape. Welcome.
All right, so we nominated, Kathy and I, Anita, has been continuously stood out as a positive peer model in our 4K classroom. There's a student that uses a tablet as his communication device. Finley has interacted and plays with split specific students since beginning of school. Throughout his interactions and play with the student, he models and encourages his peers on how to interact and play. Finley is always thinking of others and always, sorry, allows everyone to be part of what they're doing, never excluding individuals. Finley willingly leads, lends a helpful hand to his peers, and when it comes to solving problems such as an art project or a simple cleanup and mess, he shows great empathy when others are upset. He is kind-hearted, compassionate, helpful, and polite. And beyond all these great attributes, Finley continues generally is a wonderful individual with a great personality and a wonderful sense of humor. He is an asset to our classroom and a great helper.
You can see how proud your teachers are, right? How fortunate we are to have some amazing teachers helping us out and doing good things for our students. And we want you to have this as well. Do you have a good spot for this in your house? Do you think you could put that out?
Yeah.
What do you think, though?
Yeah.
Oh, I like that. Yeah, that'd be amazing. And we are fortunate to have Mom and Dad here tonight, and thank you for both of you. I happened to be over at Agape the other day, and I saw firsthand you working and helping other students out. It just was so sweet. You've got a heart of gold, both of you. Absolutely wonderful to have you here. Do you think we could go out to the hallway and we can take pictures with Mom and Dad? And a couple of my friends here are teachers and others. Brian, can I trouble you to help me take some pictures tonight, please?
My 4K ladies are out.
It's 4K, Lisa.
I'm happy to ask.
We can come up to the kitchen.
I mean, exactly enough for anyone.
No, I'm not. He isn't for anyone. And they appreciate that.
I don't mix them.
I was gonna say, I have that in your hand. I didn't think I got picked to do anything, to be honest. Yes.
Well, surprised. You're a little bit behind, but surprised.
The way, the way the schedule is going, it's about, it's about...
It's really important.
All right, let's get cruising here.
They got me a picture. You just gotta simmer down. Yes. Just go, go, go. Business all the time.
Seven years there. Yeah, both kids and the year in between. When I knew I was gonna be back, I was like, oh, I'm so sure this is gonna work.
But it's the same thing.
I know, I quit. You need to stand or go to the bathroom.
Oh, that's the target for people. It's just the case.
I'm not, I'm not good at guessing who on this meeting's serving. I'm not.
Yeah, I've been...
Because how about you think they have that? Nope, not in guessing tonight.
It's like a 20-year term.
I mean, it's...
We need more of this.
I missed that one.
It was a very small, it was a, so it's Sarah, right?
I know.
Sarah Strachan, right there. Because we had one that's got legs that was short, but it wasn't as short as that one. It was like 40 minutes.
I was gonna say, I think before that, like 43 minutes was...
Yeah, the first was, that was...
I think the longest one I've been in was...
These meetings are amazing, though.
Was that one, the one I had to get out of here?
What was the...
Jeff is just awesome.
Like, we could read. We could go through everyone in the finance. We would read into the minutes, the minutes.
So, like, does it, word for word, read the minutes?
Yes.
I, I, three years ago, you know?
I got a question.
Yeah, right.
I was like, Jim, you're stupid.
It is. It's stupid.
And I remember what we were arguing about, but it was like, Dad, is that even something we argued about? It was like, no, no.
But that'd be tough.
You should do that.
Yeah, yeah. It was like 1:00 a.m. that we got up here. Poor Jeff, like, he had to be up at 3:00. Yeah.
So...
I love Jeff.
I miss Jeff.
We have a bunch of people here that's actually on the side. I just heard...
He, uh, he sent me a couple.
I don't know if it's single or...
No, I was sure they were colorful. He was, they were very pointed. Yeah. Did I see right that somebody did something?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
But Jeff, yes, Jeff, you did. You did.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right, here we go.
All right, moving on to 3B. School news. Ethan, would you like to start us out with some news?
No, I'm actually... I'm sorry?
Ethan's gonna start us out with school news.
Okay, well, too.
All right, so I have the rules varsity and JV basketball at Monroe on Tuesday, February 7th, and then at Oregon on Friday. I have boys varsity and JV basketball in Mount Fork on Thursday against Baraboo, and on Saturday against Edgewood. Varsity Gymnasium in Africa is Brooke. It's Friday, February 10. And there's the Rotary Brunch and Silent Auction. So it's at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday, February 12.
Thanks, Ethan.
No, no, I'm just gonna go ahead. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Do you have school news to add?
Just two quick items, if you don't mind. First, I want to congratulate all our school counselors. This week is School Counselor Week across the state of Wisconsin. And as you know, we just have a great complement of professionals who help support our kids every single day. And then lastly, if you are hungry tomorrow, right, Leah?
Yes.
What's happening? You have Colvers?
It's Colvers Night for the PTO, so there will be...
It's all day?
All day, but there will be teachers there between 5:00 to 8:00. The kids like when they bring them food at Colvers, and it's a very exciting event. But there will be very long lines, so plan accordingly. And it will probably snow, or sleet, or rain, or hail, or tornadoes. I don't know. There'll be some sort of weather event because there's, every year when we, when we pick a night, there's a weather event, okay?
Good to know.
Warning you ahead of time.
Board members, any school news other than Leah, who she just said hers?
Yeah, Saturday, between the JV and varsity basketball games, they're doing a 10-year anniversary for Wisco Radio. I've had the pleasure of being involved a little bit with those guys, but just never want it to be lost, what a cool thing that is, where anywhere you're at, hop on, you know, YouTube and watch the Mount Hore game. It's pretty, pretty awesome for that. And then the opportunities that they're giving kids all the time to get their feet wet in a really, in a professional environment. It's pretty awesome.
Yes. That's fantastic. All right, moving on to 3C, citizens' comments. All right, moving on to 4, personal transactions.
And addendum, board members?
Thank you.
Motion to approve with the addendum.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Rod, seconded by Carly. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to, we're gonna, as I said at the beginning, we'll move 7A up, our action item, to consider approval of students attendance at the DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando in April. We will discuss that first.
How fortunate we are to have Mrs. Carol here. She's just done a terrific job with our DECA students. What is year five now?
That sounds about right. COVID kind of confused. Yep, started in 2019, so...
And you've just taken our program in just a wonderful direction. Thank you.
It's so much fun.
Yeah, I know you're having as much fun as the kids are. I hear you're heading out for Orlando.
We are. It's in Orlando here. It's the big year. Last year, last time I was in Orlando, it was over 50,000 DECA members. In fact, they've had to shut down the Nashville rotation because we got too big. So, yep, and coming back with COVID numbers after this, so. But yes, so our DECA group has had an incredible year. We are almost back to our pre-COVID membership numbers after a couple of years of doing things virtually. We had an incredible show in our district's event on January 7th at, the show was at DeForest High School. Came home with over 100 pieces of hardware. Luckily, did not have to ship it this year because that would have been a good launch. And ended up with 27 kids qualifying for state, which is in Lake Geneva here in a couple of weeks, which is the biggest group I've ever taken to state. And it may be the biggest group on boards ever taken to state. So that's really exciting. More kids doing projects this year in addition to the general role play that they all do. So taking some more things. They've been working with local businesses, including Brown Paws Rescue, and Capitabella, and a couple other ones. So really getting some local businesses involved with what we're doing. But I am here to request travel to Orlando for our International Career Development Conference. The dates of that event are, including travel, would be April 21st through the 26th. I, at this point, I'm not sure how many kids we'll be taking. Last year, I took 14 to Atlanta and had an amazing time. I don't know if you heard, but we had two freshmen who placed second in the world, which is just insane. And I had advisors after we had an eighth place and 20th place and a second segments in the water in Mount Hore. I think we were the only second place in Wisconsin, and they were freshmen. So they're coming back this year. So we are, it's a big year. It's an expensive year. We have been fundraising. We've been doing every concession night we can. We have a Culver's Share Night coming up in March. We did a Once Upon a Time event where we just covered small children in glitter and did dances, did Disney songs. And that was a wonderful event, but it also helped us raise some money. But we're looking at probably about $1,200 roughly per student. So we're hoping to cover as much of that as we can possibly. And then some of the kids will be doing some self-funding. We have some other, some other fundraising coming up. But my, my assumption is I'll be taking, I would guess around the same number, somewhere between 10 and 15 kids this year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a great time. Come back and let us know how it goes.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Have a great day.
All right, now we will move back to our discussion items, starting with our committee member reports. Adam, your first, building grounds of transportation.
Sounds good. Had a few highlights here off the last meeting. Anyone who's read through, I'll just hit the ones that resonated with me in particular. Getting, getting comfortable in the new cleaning model with both SIMs leading the way, helping navigate our crew cleaning, cleaning the, the other areas, and Cleanmark taking care of academic areas at the high school. Seems to be a partnership that's working out really nicely. Softball light project continues to progress. Looks like we're already coming up pretty soon here that they're gonna try to get the light beers into sort of weather-dependent.
I saw some activity over there today.
There were pictures on Facebook today.
Okay, here we go. It's happening.
Happening.
And then it'd be a melt this week, so that can only help, right? There is some work in progress here with the tennis and pickleball court reconstruction out there, moving along with the design process at this point. One thing that Brian mentioned was that he went out of his way to compliment the road crews in our townships for their communication as much as their work. They're, he said they're just incredibly responsive, and it really helps with planning ahead when there's inclement weather and knowing that you can count on that to, to get the country roads clean. The, he also mentioned, and I can't remember if this already happened in time ways, about the Wisconsin School Bus Association hosting a legislative day. I believe that has already passed and that he was planning on attending at that point. So that was, that was cool. The last thing, there was something that, that Dave Reed wanted to put on our radar, is an unfortunate one, is that the building automation system at the ICE needs, needs some evaluation. It's running on a product, on a Honeywell product that does not, is not doing the job, and it doesn't mesh with what are the rest of our buildings use this automated logic system. So they are gonna explore costs and plans for converting that over and get back to us before any decisions are made, but want to, want to get that on our radar in terms of the maintenance repair.
Great. Questions for Adam? Thank you very much. We can move on to finance committee with Jim.
Yes, I will keep this fairly short because we last met on January 9th. So as a full board, we have met twice since then. But on the 9th, we spent most of our time discussing Policy 840, Public Gifts to Schools, and Policy 851, Advertising in Schools, which we have all convened since then and have had discussions on that. So that's the bulk of our meeting, and we are scheduled to meet next Monday night on 2/13.
Thank you very much. Questions for Jim? All right, moving on to safety and wellness. Jessica?
We met on Monday, January 16. We started our meeting with having Michelle Denk present to us the wellness policy, which doesn't necessarily usually come to the board, but it is, the feds require that it gets revised every three years, and when it does, it needs to be shared with the committee. So she went through that document with us. Michelle also spoke with us about the large delinquent lunch balance accounts. I'm sure you've all noticed the, the email and Facebook campaigns for Everybody Eats. She said that we currently have the highest unpaid school lunch balances we've ever had. It's over $9,000. So hopefully the Everybody Eats Fund is, is gathering some donations. When we met, it was Martin Luther King Day, and on that day, the teachers had an institute with Percy Brown, who is the Milton Cross Plains Equity Director, I believe is his title. And they said they had a great presentation. It was, I don't know if Sarah showed it here or in a committee meeting, but it, there is a continuum of professional learning related to equity, and this is one of the activities along that. We briefly discussed the community forum, which happened December 12th, which we've already talked about here. The WRBS data for middle school students is finally available, so that will be discussed at our meeting this month. Brian had received word that they received a new, or a round of a new grant, Get Kids Ahead Initiative. At the time, I think he wasn't quite sure exactly what the funding could be spent on, so we're gonna follow up with that. Brian and our school psychologists are going to the National School Psychologist Conference next week, or this tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
All right. In terms of school safety, they're working on two different documents. Investigation reminders for when investigations happen at the school level, the district or the school, the village, possibly also the county, so that the students aren't having to repeat information, sort of get that process aligned. And then also a process and procedures document for when a student goes missing. We briefly talked about COVID, that there was a steady decline of positive cases, and that there's still a steady flow of people showing up at the bus garage for testing. And our next meeting is February 20.
Thank you. Questions for Jessica?
Is the bus testing, is that, we have that through the end of the school year?
Through April 30.
April 30.
And what are the hours on the bus garage?
It's, it kind of varies by date, but it's all on our website. If you go to the very bottom of the website, under COVID guidelines, all the, the dates are listed in there and the times.
Great. Thanks, Brian.
Other questions? Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, moving on to 6B, shared learning reflections from the WASP, WASDA, WASBO convention. Who would like to start?
All right, I can start. Thanks, Jessica. We did talk about some of these things, you know, last week at our workshop. So sort of just to reiterate, I tried to focus my presentations on board effectiveness. So I went to one session on building trust amongst ourselves and then also in the community, one about what makes a good question, you know, making sure that we're learning focused, that we're curious, and we're interested. And then also one on a referendum. Was it La Crosse? No, it wasn't La Crosse. It was Oshkosh.
Oshkosh.
Oshkosh. And their referendum process and what, you know, Adam was also in there. All of the sessions were fantastic. I learned a lot. I took lots of notes about community engagement, things that we could be doing as a board to help our effectiveness. I learned a lot of takeaways about what the board and the admin did to successfully pass their referendum in terms of taking a phased approach, really having a strategic plan that was informed by a facility study and a population study, and really making sure to tell the, the whole story of the, of the need, the beginning and the end. And I have lots of other notes. But I thought it was a really good use of time. You never know what you're gonna get at a conference. And that, I, I, I thought they were all good sessions, and it was a really valuable opportunity to be with all of you and talk.
Thank you. Others?
I can go. So I went to one, we already kind of talked about two, on naming rights, which was very, very useful. Helped with the PTSD a little bit. And if you guys all got the, the book that they put together, but it, it might be a really good way for us to go. I went to one on innovative compensation, and nowhere in the entire presentation did we talk about innovative compensation. So that one was kind of let down. We did talk a lot about the Equal Pay Act, and I figured people already there should have known what that was. So that, that one was kind of a bust.
Two strikes.
Yeah, that one was brutal. I went to the same one as Jessica on building trust, and they gave us a book, which I then gave to Jessica because she's a reader and...
I will read it, Cheryl. I haven't started it yet.
It'll take me six years to get through a book. So I also went to one, which was very cool on students. It was a student-led, and it was Students Leading Their School Against Hate. And the group is We Are Many, United Against Hate. They are in Dodgeville, Deerfield, McFarland right now. It was very, very cool. They were, they, they took any question, no matter how dumb it was from an adult, and they, they just went with it. Some of the questions made me shudder as a, as an adult, and they just, they, it was fantastic. I don't think we have one of those, obviously, we're not that group, but it might be worth maybe looking into getting a chapter here. I don't know. They talked about like microaggressions and some of the things the girl said I would have never like, would have never crossed my mind as being a microaggression. So it was very cool. Or even just getting some of those kids to come speak. It was fantastic. I went to one on growing school-based mental health. They started out by saying, we got a very large grant. So then everything kind of after that, they kind of lost me. But they do some screeners. This was at La Crosse. They have a bunch of screeners that they do for like every grade. And I know we've kind of talked about that and what some of the limitations are, but they're doing it there, and that was kind of it. I didn't, I didn't pick a path. I just picked which one sounded interesting. And apparently on some of them, I didn't read all of the descriptions.
It was the first year for paths, so...
Yeah, that is true. It was the first year for paths. I did kind of start that way and then switched it around. So always a good time. Always learn something, so.
I'll just mention, just real quick, I, I went more the financial path, but I did attend a few outside of that. I would agree with Leah. I did attend the naming rights session, and I think there's a lot to learn there. And I found that one to be the most useful breakout. I enjoyed the keynote speakers, and I was really impressed by the conference overall, so enjoyed the whole time.
Great, thank you. Others?
I, I kind of focused on topical things that, you know, where you're dealing with, you're talking about, or where I could. And so I went to a different one on referendum. It was led by School Perceptions. They talked about what, what does, what are the factors that can drive referendum success? And it was really interesting because he kind of busted some myths around, you know, what you might assume would support or kill a referendum versus what actually does. And a couple of takeaways there was just that they emphasized how hard athletic projects are to add on a referendum, and how it really makes the chance of passing challenging, more challenging. But he really talked about how it's like overall, how happy a community is with the school system, has a huge influence on, on successful referendums, and spent a lot of time talking about what you can do to, to measure that and improve that and increase community engagement. And how do you get your message out? How do you tell your story? Because if you're not actively telling it, then someone else is. There was some on community engagement that was interesting given the community. It made me think of the Facility Steering Committee, and a lot of the things we were doing there were emphasized in that session. There was one on post-secondary, getting post-secondary success in high school, where it's focused on a school district who's moving away from AP classes, more toward dual-credit classes, they're more cost-effective, they're more, students seem... classes, they're more cost-effective, they're more, students seem appreciated more, families seem appreciated more, and talked about some of the same CTE stuff that we were talking about just earlier this evening, which was pretty cool. And then I went to one on legislative advocacy, which was similar to what Leah said, a very specific, like, very specific case, was a school district that had like a super easy bill that they wanted passed, and so, a very unique case for them, but I think the takeaway there, the lesson there is that it's worth taking the time to build those relationships over the long term and to keep a focused program over and over and over again. And then there was a legislative update that I attended that was given by WASPY, just on state of the legislature, state of the legislature right now, where we are in the budget process, what they're hearing in terms of how budget negotiations might go once they start, and so that was pretty useful, too, that, I don't know if you want to hear any of that right now, or you should hear it later. The gist is that, all right, okay, the gist is that they think that they're going into this session of the budget, that there's somewhat of a better relationship between the governor and the legislature, that there, the governor obviously has started to communicate some of his big asks, $600, $350 on the revenue limit in the first year, $650 in the second year. He's going to make that formal budget proposal on the 15th of February. It'll go, yeah, it's also, he also had funding, funding special at up to 60% in the first year, and, or 30, wait, I can't remember what it was.
60, 90.
60, 90, 90 in the second year, also high, but having that $7 billion surplus makes things kind of weird out there, right? Like, there's going to be a lot of push and pull over that, knowing that a lot of other districts, which we did not do, but knowing that a lot of districts use COVID money for operations, for ongoing costs, is probably going to drive some of that conversation as well. And there are just competing priorities from the governor and the legislature. Obviously, Governor Revers, he's made a push about increasing school funding. The legislature, they want to cut taxes, they want to push a flat tax, they want to increase vouchers, and that's going to be, I think, where the push and the pull and the tension is, is the negotiations play out. One thing that they mentioned that I don't, I wrote this note down that I don't think I realized, that voucher schools get 90% of their special needs costs met, which is obviously clearly, clearly far, far away beyond what we do. And what else? They talked a little bit about some other upcoming bills that are likely going to come up once we get past the budget process, or as part of, after, obviously budgets are a big focus right now, but after that, there are probably going to be bills around reading and early literacy, shared services, which is something that the last session started to look at with some committees around, where like, maybe there are districts that, I think particularly rural districts, that are sharing, I don't know, bus services, or staff, or classes, or something to try and figure out how to be more cost-effective. Financial literacy, transparency, and parental rights is probably going to come back, and allowing lawsuits against school districts is probably going to come up. And then there, it sounds like they're also talking about proposed advisory referendum, prohibiting schools from teaching that one race is superior and responsible for past acts. So just a heads up on things that may be coming up in the next, over this session.
Thanks, Carly.
So I either compliment or don't overlap the self-promotion one, the referendum, was that one in the school field?
No, this was done by School Perceptions.
Okay, okay. That was a common theme.
Who does our stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was a common theme at the other referendum-based session that I was at, of just, you know, it goes back to what we've talked about a lot, about how 70% or whatever the number is of people in your town don't have someone actively in the district, and you think, when you're in the middle of it, that that's all that matters, and for a lot of people, life goes on, and they're very just far removed from it, even if they're interested in what's going on. So the more you can do to get word out and invite people in, I think was their other reminder of not just getting word out, but really figuring out ways to involve the community and events at your school, interactions with people from your school is a good thing. And the other one, the Grad Pathways Conversation, was that with the gentleman from CISA? Is that Scott Carr?
No, this was, this was Milwaukee High School who kind of walked through what they did. They set a goal to have 100% of their students have some sort of exposure, whether it was an AP class, a TECA, like, an internship, you know, wide range, and so they talked through how they approached that and what they did, and they had a lot of, a lot of good ideas.
There was compliments, the one that I went to, then there was a guy who works for CISA VII now, and he's been an at-risk counselor. Yeah, he's been around the state in some really tough districts. He was in Milwaukee, and some other areas up north, where you're dealing with kind of different circumstances, but the same realities of how do you keep people interested and give them motivation? I was just really interested with his, the way that he presented it, and I grabbed a deck that I'd be glad to share with everyone here, because it's like loaded, it's very dense, but he talked about 16 pathways to graduation.
He didn't get through all of them either.
He didn't even get close to getting through all of them, but it was eye-opening in terms of what are we thinking about here? And his couple of big points were the difference between options, which is reactive, of what happens when this one doesn't work out, versus pathways, which is presenting this at a young enough age to kids, where you realize, like, traditional route's not going to work maybe with this kid, and what do they have in mind, of making sure that you have this system in place so that it's not rearbiting the wheel every time that you run into this situation. And the concept also of readiness versus achievement, of readiness to go out into the world, be a productive member, rather than what have you proven that you can do and have done? Not that there isn't a place for it, but it was just the getting away from the concept of the hard and fast. You have to pass this, 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 to be able to be considered a graduate and to be able to go on and achieve what you want. So I'd be glad to share that one, I thought that was neat. Two other quick sessions I'll touch on. One was a special ed, essentially, using the old terms, on the job training. This is another Oshkosh one, where they had a cafe where they were working, it was basically staffed, it was a mix, just a lot of kids who were intellectually challenged, mixed with other kids, all working in one environment together, getting some really good on-the-job experience. They've done a successful program in terms of the revenue that they create out of that, making it profit self-sustaining, and get into that specifically, especially if you're talking about salaries that the people oversee it, but it is, it's a very like cost-conscious concept, to the point where they actually bought a food truck this year. They saw an opportunity to get out in the community, and they were at like 60 events last year with a lot of these kids, a lot of students that are actually drawing salaries. It's not just the credit opportunity that exists inside the school environment, so it was just, it was a neat way of looking at things and getting kids more experiences. And then the last session was, I dropped in on a solar presentation, just to get an update, I had heard, I'd gotten a tap on the shoulder from an old Cap Times colleague, mentioning that the big infrastructure bill had changed the dynamic on costs, because it's a 30% knockoff off the price tag now, rather than a rebate, or an earn-back, or anything along those lines. It's still one of those things where it's like a 10, 12-year investment to get money back on it, but the dynamics definitely changed on solar in that respect, so kind of worth re-exploring, and I talked to Dave Reed a little bit about just throwing the options out there, realizing that there's, they're the first people to tell you that there's a lot of things to consider, age of roof, you know, scale of roof, solar exposure, it's not for everybody, but just kind of a cool thing, not only for a utility, but also a curriculum option. They work a lot of the science and the readouts from the production of that into their science and math classes, so it's kind of a cool one. And then, last thing I just want to cover off quickly on was the delegate assembly, which is four hours I'll never get back. I say that jokingly, because I will put my name out there right now to go back and answer and do it. I thought it was fascinating, it was like sitting in, in the House of Representatives in many ways, because there's a lot of friggin' grandstanding, but it was phenomenal the way they went through it. Some issues that I think would interest folks here was there was a high-cost transportation aid that was built for rural districts. There was a move to try to get that to apply to potentially metro areas because of the difficulty of travel. That got, that got shot down. There's a change that was supported by delegates of private transportation costs to change from per pupil to per household. This is obviously just a platform plank, it does, it's not law, it's something that would have to go through at the legislature level, but it's something that they want to, went on record supporting. An amendment urging state to initiate aid programs for CTE education. Universal free lunch popped up. A lot of people on both sides of that argument that crossed over ideological lines in terms of potential benefits, actual costs out of that, it wound up getting shot down, but there was, there was a lot of really in-depth nuanced conversation on it that was interesting. The two that were the hot button was a voter education amendment to a clause that said what a well-rounded education is, and it was a subject such as, civics was already on there, but there was a push to add voter education, like the actual practice of was the intent. This was sponsored by a couple of students from Oshkosh, again, wanted to introduce that at the WASPY level, and that one set off a firestorm because of the interpretations of what that means. And it was, it was really interesting to come back to what the students want out of it, because regardless of what it stands, you know, statewide or anything, it's like, thinking about what we could and should do as a district to prepare kids to actually walk into, you know, a voting booth, and what do you do, and what are the mechanics of it, and just make sure that there's a really solid understanding, because apparently that's not something that people know how to do, according to many of the folks who were there. And the last one, then I'll shut up, guns on school grounds. There's, there was, there's an existing amendment in there that just says like, no, no guns. There's a lot of folks from different areas of the state where you have, hunter safety might take place on a school campus, you have trap shooting clubs, this type of stuff, and then I think you have the other side of like a safety. Some districts believe that you should be able to have retired law enforcement personnel be able to carry on your campus, is another, you know, good guys to take care of bad guys argument, and that lasted about 45 minutes. Another, obviously, charged consideration, and wound up getting shot down eventually on that, but it was, again, it was just like a great reminder of like, you know, you look at things in a certain way based on your own beliefs, but also where you are in the state and what goes on, and think about how these laws and policy platforms are applied statewide.
Those are a lot of very heavy topics. Now, I understand why you were in there later than typical.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and they ran out of quorum. That's the only reason that we escaped when we did.
Interesting. Well, thank you very much. I attended as well, but, you know, not to add to any of the, I've attended some of the sessions that Adam went to as well, and really enjoyed the keynote that, I can't remember what her name was, but it was, it was very informative, and something I took away was some phrases that I plan to use in the future.
Not for evil.
Not for evil, for good.
Can't use the phrases for evil.
Use them for good, because that's what we do. But yeah, I thought it was a great convention, there were some, some really good sessions on some, some very interesting topics that kind of hit home for us as well, so. Thanks, everybody who attended, it was, it was great, good time. Steve, anything that you would like to add?
Just a note of gratitude to everybody who was able to attend. It's something special to have as many board members as we had attend the event. Clearly, a lot was learned, so thank you, everybody, for taking time.
All right, moving on to 6C, opportunities for board-level legislative engagement. Carly, I think this was your...
Yes. And segue's from my last WASPY session. I know, so I had asked to put this on the agenda before, Dr. Stein has sent out an email about the next CALE meeting, which is at the end of February, specifically focused on the start of the legislative session, and he's also already sent a note about the WASPY Day at the Capitol on March 22nd, an advocacy day, a day-long advocacy day to meet with our state legislatures to talk about what we want to see out of the budget and help advocate for that. And I, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about it, because I think that, you know, overall, I think we're at the start of the legislative session, so it's the right time to start talking about it with the budget process starting, and the state education funding structures, obviously, are our biggest priority right now. We also have a new Assembly Representative and a new Senator, and Diane Hesselbein has been with the legislature before, but Mike Fair is brand new, and so it's a good opportunity for us to start building those relationships, and even, they don't, they, we can't take it for granted that our legislators know the ins and outs of what we need and why, regardless of what side of the aisle that they're on, they, they need our, they need our education and those relationships. And then also, I think, you know, we just ask the community to take on a significant portion of funding, and I think we owe it to them to make sure that we're also asking for the state to do their share in that, and I think that we also, as a board, as fellow elected officials, have a unique credibility to push that advocacy, so that's like overall why I think we should keep doing this. I don't know what the right next forums are, I mentioned that CALE is starting back up again, and maybe that's where, I guess ultimately, what I would love to see is if there's appetite and capacity to develop some longer-term legislative advocates, advocacy strategies and activities. The budget seems the next most pertinent opportunity, the Day at the Capitol. There will also be budget hearings once the legislature's joint finance committee starts hashing through the details of the budget, and if we could send someone to prepare testimony, I think it'd be great to get our staff involved, students, if they are interested in testifying at the budget. There's a lot of other things that we can do to continue to develop those, that kind of activity over the long term, but, yeah, so, I know, I'm curious what others' thoughts are, interesting.
Those are super good ideas. In the past, we have done, as you mentioned, all that kind of stuff in community legislative committee. We've written a lot of letters, we've gone to the Day at the Capitol, I believe Kimberley, even Kimberley, maybe, did a, testified at a hearing, if I remember correctly. We've tried to reach out, we had several forums where we had our elected officials come and speak, so, yeah, you're right, the timing is right now, and we should, I would like to go to the Day at the Capitol with you, whoever else is going to go from the district. Yeah, it's hugely important, and I really appreciate that you pointed out that like, we just asked our community to spend all this money, so we should be trying really hard to make sure the state does their part, yeah.
I really like what you said about advocacy strategy, like putting together something organized that kind of has a list of the things. I also like the idea of doing some sort of advocacy calendar.
Yeah.
Which could be worked on in community legislative engagement, where you kind of have something kind of structured, where you know, well, at this point in the, in the budget cycle, or at this point in the year, this is what we need to do at that point in time, or, or when the legislators like have more time available, or are more open to those sort of meetings, there are times when they're probably not as available, so I think, I think that would be a really good idea. I think that's something that community legislative could start in, at the committee level, and then bring back to the full board as like, okay, this is what we worked on, and this is what we think is a good idea. Others have ideas on that? Other ideas on that?
I think one thing, one thing that I've learned from past advocacy volunteer work is that they, legislators, they obviously want to hear from you as the experts, but they really want to hear from their constituents. And so where there's opportunities to engage business owners, community members, of people that aren't us to help make whatever case, that that's, I think we should figure out how we can do that as well, incorporate that into.
That's where a calendar would help too. When do we need to start reaching out to people to have that sort of conversation to bring them with us to wherever?
So I would say if you want to, I wouldn't put too much stock in the day at the Capitol, but the legislative day at the Capitol. We can see our, our legislators virtually any, anytime. It's more, it's more of a benefit to WASB than it is to us, I think. So I think we really got to think through how much energy you want to spend planning and preparing for that when I don't think you're actually going to get, you're going to get much more benefit out of scheduling an appointment outside of that day and not having the legislator be, be pressed for time and, and have, you know, 20, 25 people in the, in the waiting room. So I, I would, I would be thoughtful about that.
That's a good point. I think it might be more memorable too, at a time when they don't have, you know, a line out the door.
Right.
Of people wanting to meet with them. That's a good point.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Chances are you're going to get a staffer.
I was going to say you're going to.
On those days anyway. When I did it for, back for the union, you've got a staffer 90% of the time and there were, as many of you could fit in the room at a time went in and then you all left and then the next group came in. So we're 20 or 30, we crammed in those tiny rooms.
I mean, what WASB wants to be able to do is tell the governor and the legislative leaders that they turned out all these people. That's, that's, that's the object of it.
And I think there's power in that, right? If like they can say that this, we're united behind this. Because I think what I also gathered, and I don't remember if it was from the legislative update or another conversation I had, is that they're trying to focus their legislative asks so that it's not just all over whatever. It's, you know, we need the special ed funding reimbursed at a higher rate, like focusing it. And so if they're hearing that message and they're sending numbers on that message, I think that could be effective, but I, I hear your, I've beaten my head against the wall in other shoes.
So I actually just thought of an idea for the, for KAL. I'd actually try to see our new representative as quickly as possible because I don't, I'm not sure if I, I know that, that person's background thoroughly, but if, if we have the opportunity to help educate that person in, in a systematic thorough way in advance of this other stuff, like whether it's legislative or, or advocacy-driven, then, then I think, because one of the things that we want to, we want to be, and Adam, I think he'll appreciate this, any, we, we want to be a source to that, to that legislature, to legislators. So let's, let's begin that relationship as quickly as we can. It doesn't mean we can be slipshod. We still have to be articulate and well, well-reasoned and well-prepared and all that sort of stuff, but that's, that's a relationship that we should start immediately.
I believe to tell you that Representative Bear has accepted our offer to come visit our school district. He's going to do that on March the 9th. So I think to your point exactly, it's not an ask of us, it's just to build a relationship. How can we be of service to him, have him see firsthand the great things that are happening in our schools?
Can we also show him some needs while he's here?
Absolutely. Yeah, Michael.
I just, he can see it firsthand.
Yes.
It would be powerful, I think.
We're working on the details of what that agenda looks like for that day, but rest assured, yes, absolutely.
Great. Further discussion? Thanks so much for bringing this up. It's a good thing to check out. All right. Moving on to six D, information advocacy report to identify evolving demographic trends in the number of communities.
So hopefully we had a chance to kind of review this data. One of the things that we talk about every year when we look at this is the overall district data, the numbers always look a little bit different and they're different than Third Friday and they're different than Second Friday. And the reason is, is one, all of this information is on Y's data and it all pulls kind of real time. The other thing is, is that it, like on Third Friday count, a fourth, a 4K'er is only a partial student, where in this data, it's a full-time student. So that's why, just as a whole, when you're looking at the district and the data, why numbers do look a little bit different than other datas or information you might see. But basically, when this is for us to look at trends, like what are the trends? And so when we look at our five-year average across the board, what are we seeing? And we've talked about this, overall, the overall district data is continuing to have a, is, we're in a decline for enrollment as a district as a whole. What's fascinating throughout, when you start to look at all of the demographic information and start breaking it down, all of our broken-down data is considering, is, is having increases. So when you look at specifically race and ethnicity, we're having more race and ethnicity within our district. So we're seeing a greater variety of students within our district. And so that's a good thing, especially around the work that we're doing for diversity and inclusion and equity and all of that, all of that work. So we're seeing that progressively. We're the most diverse than we've ever been. When we look at table two for students with disabilities, we have the most students with disabilities than we've ever had before. So we have over 300 and, well, we have 319 students, right, who have IEPs within our district. When you look at table three for our five, our five-year average for students with ELL, we have the most ELL students that we've ever had. And when we get to the next table of students who are free and reduced lunch, it's the most students we've had who are qualified for free and reduced lunch. So while our overall information is that district is in decline in enrollment, the needs are continuing to increase. And so that's where, you know, we, we talk about the things we need, right? And where we've spent some of our SRF funds and mental health supports, social work, ELL position, special ed funding is critical to us continuing to, to be successful as a district. And then kind of the last part of the, of the graph is just really looking at some of our data, which is kind of the important piece about the WRBS. Is one of the key questions, right, is are there adults that I can talk to at school if I have a problem? And right now in seventh and eighth grade, we're at 68% and at our high school, we're at 71%. This is better than our COVID numbers, but significantly decreased from pre-COVID, like before we had COVID. We were in the eighties, like upper 80%. So this is a pretty low number to be absolutely honest, so.
Yeah, this stood out to me.
The what?
This stood out to me as well, you know, how we could try to increase these numbers.
Yep.
Is that something you're talking about? Like what can we do to make sure that we're engaging? And I think, I think we can kind of say that there probably is some sort of COVID impact if you're looking at seventh and eighth graders. I mean, their sixth grade year for the seventh graders wasn't our typical, a typical year last year. And then if you're looking at the eighth graders, you know, they were completely out of line for most of their sixth grade year and then their seventh grade year was not a typical year. So I think we're looking at probably still some results of that, but there certainly has to be some things that we can do to outreach to students, make sure that they have those connections with the buildings. I'm sure you guys are talking about that.
We are talking about it in council and with our student services team about how to raise this back up, so. Yeah, so it's, it's important data because this is like the true indicator that we found as a district, this was a big district-wide goal, was to raise these numbers up for many years and it's getting back to that because that's the critical piece of school connectedness and then trust and relationships, so. Yeah. And then table seven is just what we're continuing to do. So these are all kind of big, big initiatives that we're doing to focus on student mental health and wellness. The parts in the blue are the additions. So we now have Oregon Mental Health, starting at kindergarten, they're doing therapy within our schools to our kindergarten students all the way up through 12th grade. Kind of a cool little thing, which I know is like super small, but we have the resource guide that's available and you've seen the packets everywhere. We've kind of moved it to a QR code. So like if district office, somebody can come with their camera, kind of show the picture and then it gives them all their resources, we'll bring it right up to their phone. In terms of school safety, we've talked about this as a group of repeater signals, halo systems at the high school, and then the grant that we're working on for the 3D mapping, the Get Kids Ahead initiative, we got round one last year, Jessica mentioned in round two, but round two again is over $40,000 for our district. So, so that's exciting news. And then we're continuing to work on staff wellness through different initiatives. And then Megan Hendrick, one of our social workers, is actually providing free yoga to our staffs. Not sure how often, but on, on some Mondays throughout the school year, so. And then also we're partnering with Dane County Human Services and they're coming in and doing a cognitive behavior therapy within our school district for a group of high school students. And then our high school staff have had formal training in SEBIR, SEBIR, which is AODA training. So it's the identification of students who might be on drugs, but then what can we do as quick interventions and supports once we identify? So that's the important piece is what can we do, what kind of counseling and, and quick like intervention that we can get kids to, to help support them if they are, you know, having trouble with addiction of Big Beam, tobacco and maybe some drugs as well. That's what I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to six E, Second Friday in January update. And Scott is not here tonight, so.
Happy to take that.
Great, thanks.
This is the second touch point with regard to student enrollment that the board will be visiting this, this winter, the first of which was our K8 staffing plan, which we shared with you at the board workshop the other day. This is another slice of the pot. This is what we are going to produce for the good folks of the DPI 2336. This is our Second Friday count. This helps with funding for the school district. The third touch point that we'll have on this topic will come on February 20th. As you may remember, we have UW Madison's Applied Laboratory Population Study coming. They'll be joining us here online that night to present their findings. This will help us prognosticate what kinds of numbers can we expect to see with birth rates and the like. We do expect our high school, just as we begin to see more and more students leaving the high school with smaller incoming class sizes. To, to Brian's point, we're going to continue to see smaller numbers at the high school. My guess is there could actually be a period of time where we're somewhere in the low 600s as we watch those groups go up. So this will be a really great study for us, but right now this is where we're sitting at with regard to the Second Friday count in January.
Questions, board members? Thanks, Steve. All right, moving on to, or actually item seven B, resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation school improvement bonds.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is really a formalization of the topic that the board previously considered back in late October. This allows us now to continue with prepaying the service debt that we have. You can see that amount is 1.265 million dollars and we're just asking for the board to memorialize that here this evening. And I'd prefer a roll call vote if I could, please.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation school improvement bond dated July 8, 2013. Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to eight, our citizens comments. Hearing none. We'll move on to nine, our list of future agenda items. As always, feel free to reach out and add things to the list. All right. Moving on to 10, schedule of next meetings. Anything of note?
I'm actually excited to tell you one that didn't get on this list because we just announced it the other day is May 31st. Sarah Earthum is planning on having our retirement celebration. Always such a nice time for us to celebrate the good work of all our retirees. That'll happen up at the high school, probably about 4:30, 5 o'clock at night. More information to follow.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 11, closed session. For the Wisconsin statutes, for a discussion of status of collective bargaining with the Department of Education Association regarding 2022, 2023 collective bargaining agreement for potential declaration of impasse and imposition at the board's final offer.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. This will be a roll call vote as well. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.